All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Council, first on our agenda tonight is the agenda review and adoption. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next up is open forum, public comment. We do have one registered tonight. General rules of the open forum. You have three minutes to address the council. And council will, has the opportunity to take up or refer your item at a future point to staff. First up, or actually the only one up tonight, is Ron Eitenhauer. Ron, if you could state your name and address for the record. Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Eitenhauer. I live over here in Washington, Washington, I'm moving to the north. And then my third house is Sartell in forty-seven years. I'm here on behalf of the Sartell Historical Society, which I'm a member of. I was a founding member in two thousand and sixteen, seven. I was part of the group to author the book, I wrote a centennial poem. Just a bit of background, I've been here forty-seven years. I was a billing official and tax assessor here from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and seven. So it looks different than when I was here, but it looks pretty healthy. When I was here, it was four thousand people, nobody got twenty thousand. And I'm responsible for some of that work. Anyway, we understand that the city has purchased the old Bristle Mill site. John Cuthbert, the city, and my colleagues, Judy Morgan and Senior Ron Hurd, I knew them. Towards the site, and we think of a good candidate as a site for our home for our historical society. Primarily the old logging building. We looked at that, it's an older building, it was kind of fit to be some occupation, it'd be a good candidate for a museum. And so I tell my service society, the home. So what we're asking here for is the city to take a look at that property, look at that building. We have a plan B, which would be the construction of the building, move the building in, move a modified, barely current, lots of plans. I've been involved with the historical stuff for quite some time. Right now, I'm involved in the city of Great Park. There's a train on Third Street in Great Park. I own that train. And we have a convention here today I can speak. I'm also involved in the movement, so that I train music. I'm training fanatics for this. I'm still doing business, I'm a forensic billing scientist, I'm hired gun, I work in the legal profession, I test our client court. That's what I do. Anyway, so I got really involved with the historical society, and we think that site is a pretty good candidate. That's why Sartell is here, the paper mill, the site on the river. So we'd like to have a city representative, or the city council, entertaining motion to take, at least take a look and supply our group, which has been involved for about fourteen, fifteen years. We need to have a home, put our stuff, so to speak, in there, maybe, and where we can have a meeting. So, I'm talking fast because I've got three minutes, I've got forty seconds left. Anyway, so we'd like to have the city council at least look into something that we could do with that site. I understand the site's going to be for sale, we didn't know, I'm not, we're not sure the complete plan. However, we'd like to have, consider that building that's there, or a couple acres of land on the other side of the bridge that we could use to put our home in. I've got the last three minutes. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll sit down, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I do know, we have had those discussions, and they're certainly ongoing on that, on that mill site. So we'll continue that on and, and continue to have engagement or discussions. Council, next up is approval of city council minutes from July tenth special meeting, July tenth regular city council meeting, and July tenth special meeting after. I take a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from three meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have consent agenda item, we have items A through E. Look for a motion on that? Or any to be pulled?
I'll make a motion to approve items A through E.
Approve items A through E, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve items A through E? All in, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have two public hearings tonight. First one is the solar ordinance. Carrie.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I will run through the solar ordinance, first I'll go through the current solar ordinance timelines and how we got there we are tonight.
Onto the maps. That includes setback zoning and the future land use, and then our next steps from this evening. And then I would ask that we go into the hub, public hearing before we take any comments or questions from council. So, I will begin. The current solar ordinance is unclear in definitions, and no specific term for permitted or conditional uses relating to solar. It's, it's vague and difficult to comprehend of what's really allowed. But once you break it down, essentially, the main issue that we have from a staff and planning commission level is that solar gardens, depending on size, are allowed in all areas of the city. And it doesn't matter what zoning district they're in. These lack of requirements or standards within the ordinance that you see there, really make it difficult in most solar gardens. If they would come into the city under this ordinance, would be very inconsistent on designs, allowable locations and setbacks, there would not be any consistency with that. And really, one of the main issues is that it's a conditional use permit, and by definition, conditional use permit runs with the land, or if the terms of that conditional use are not met, then it would expire. But essentially, if those terms, tho- those original terms were maintained, it would just continuously run with the land. And if possible, after the lifespan of the solar panels, you could redo that plan as well. So I will go into the solar timeline overview. Planning Commission discussed the solar ordinance in March of this year at a regular meeting. We discussed that mor- a moratorium or interim ordinance was an option to amend the ordinance while protecting the planning process, and this is a common standard in use with all cities. Solar moratorium was reviewed by Planning Commission and recommended for approval on May first of this year. We, Planning Commission recommended instead of the one-year moratorium to make it six months, to help with ensuring that this process was carried out in a timely manner. Then the solar moratorium was approved by council on May eighth of two thousand and twenty-three for a period not to exceed three months. So that would expire August eighth of this year. We also had a public hearing for the solar ordinance that was drafted on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. That's where we requested a workshop with Planning Commission, which was directed by council. We then conducted a workshop on June fifth of two thousand and twenty-three. The main topics of discussion included lot coverage requirements for ground-mounted solar energy systems. We added language that includes twenty-five percent maximum for rear yard building coverage, or the accessory building coverage maximum amount, whichever is less. We also discussed that we could limit the total amount of megawatts in the city. Added language that shall not exceed ten megawatts in the city at any given time. We discussed setbacks and added the following quarter-mile setback from arterial roadways. Two hundred feet from any existing structure measured at the property line, not at where the actual solar array is on the property. Hundred feet from any other public roadways, sidewalks or trails. Two hundred feet from public parks, and then we went into a lengthy discussion about a decommissioning plan and what that looks like. From that Planning Commission meeting, we went and brought this to July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, where we went over the ordinance that was presented to them. Some of our topics of discussions included how this specific ordinance is modi- was modified with the thought of having it the city as a whole and not a particular project or application. We really wanted to ensure that we were looking at this from a whole city aspect and not one particular area. We really wanted to ensure council and other staff that we did our due diligence. We involved industry experts, welcomed any comments from surrounding agencies or cities to grasp and get their idea of what they're working with. We worked with Leesack Township, we researched other ordinances, made sure that the current and new legislation for solar was also meeting this new ordinance as well. And one of the main ideas was the idea of solar growing with the city of Sartell, and not the other way around it. Not having Sart- Sartell consumed by solar, and we have to grow around that because of the timeframe for solar gardens. They really were focusing on discussions of not prohibiting solar, and just wanted to ensure that it's developed in appropriate manner and doesn't impact orderly development within our city, or affect the health, safety and welfare of our residents and businesses that call Sartell home. We also discussed conditions with the actual interim use permit that we can add, for example, landscape maintenance and fire access agreements that we've done in a lot of other developments as well. I developed a questionnaire on the city of Sartell website that people can be directed to, to get the factual information, meeting minutes from the Planning Commission and council, as well as packets there, and that's up and running right now. And then we discussed how the new ordinance would provide a clear guide to landowners and potential developers on what the actual requirements are prior to investing time and money into their project. So with staff modifications from Planning Commission, that included adding height limits for solar energy systems, advertising restrictions and energy production reports if requested. Solar gardens, just modified two hundred feet setback from any existing structure. That was, it before was just the primary residence, and then required underground utilities, if appropriate. And then just language clarifications as well. So when we look into the actual definitions, solar garden, compose multiple panels that convert sunlight to electricity, which is not directly connected to the energy needs for the principal permitted use of the property. Essentially, this means that the actual electricity which is produced is not being tied into a residence and is actually being brought back to the grid. I did make sure that this aligns with the new definition that was passed this year with the state. And with legal advice, they, they modified it to remove the up to five megawatts phrase within the definition to satisfy the legacy program requirements, which is a state legislature item that's included in the packet that you can refer to. Then the solar energy system, that is electricity which is directly connected to the energy needs for the principal permitted use of the property. So when we look into solar energy systems, permitted use, no interim use permit required in all zoning district. The only modifications were modified to allow ground-mounted in rear yard as a permitted use, and remove front and side yard allowable areas as a conditional use. We never, that I could look back and see that we issued a CUP for this. In residential, modified ground-mounted in the rear yard permitted use, and remove side yard conditional use. Never issued a CUP for this either, and just clarifications within the actual ordinance. This will require a building permit as it does right now, layout, percentage of lot coverage, screening and setbacks would be reviewed and approved administratively. This is how we complete it right now. Add a line item for percentage of roof coverage on the building permit application to ensure efficiency in the review process. All of this is verified during review and inspection phase of the project. Then we go into solar gardens. I talked about the setbacks that we included before. Must include a site plan. Plan location of underground overhead electric lines, glare study, detailed landscaping plan. Energy production reports shall be provided upon request. This is a requirement that they need to submit anyway, but if we request this, and it's not in operation for up to, for twelve months, or more, it would trigger following the decommission standards that are outlined within the ordinance. Within that decommissioning plan, this is a requirement for solar projects to ensure that the facilities are properly removed after the expiration of the interim use permit, or if, earlier if they're not meeting the requirements after twelve months. Must include provisions for removal of structures, foundations, equip- equipment and restoration to its pre-developed condition. Financial guarantee ensuring that there will be resources available to fully de-commission the site when that time comes. And then the applicant must provide a bond, a letter of credit, escrow or other financial security. In the amount set by the city, naming the city as Abogee, this requires, this, this ensures that there is actually funds there if and when we would need to draw on that letter of credit if those decommissioning plans are not completed as outlined. So to recap, the new ordinance would allow solar energy systems as a permitted use in all zoning districts. The only modification was allowing ground-mounted solar in the rear yard, if the general requirements are met. And then all this is reviewed and verified with building and inspection processes. Solar gardens will be allowed in all zoning districts in conju- in conjunction with the interim use permit. Time limits, each interim use permit may have their own time limit, this is determined and set. Specifically for solar, I would generally assume that it would be thirty-five years, just with the permitting process with the state. Thirty-five years and the average lifespan of solar panels, I would assume it would be within the thirty to thirty-five years. Solar gardens will be limited to ten megawatts in city limits. We currently have a three-megawatt project located off Pine Cone Road. Setback requirements, as I highlighted earlier, height requirements. Designed and located in a way to utilize lowland, wetland areas or otherwise non-buildable areas. Avoid agriculture, otherwise developable areas. Screening requirements, like I stated earlier. Glare reflection study, ground cover requirements and report, reporting processes. Energy production reports, subject to plating procedures, meaning that once the property is either annexed or developed, it would trigger those plating procedures. And following all the preliminary and final plat reviews that is done by staff, engineering and fire and police, which is part of the whole site plan review as well, and a decommissioning plan. And part of the setbacks that I discussed was that quarter-mile setback from the arterial roadways. The roads are highlighted up above there, and this is just a rough picture. However, the areas in red would be the areas where you could not have solar due to those setbacks. And the blue line that you see there is approximately the edge of XL service area. And for solar, it needs to be in the XL service area, so everything to the left of that blue line would not be eligible to submit for a solar project just due to that limitation. And everything to the right, you could submit for it, but then, however, you see that there's significant setback areas. And this just includes the quarter-mile setback and not the two hundred, one hundred-foot structural or other roadway setbacks. And then you also have to think that one megawatt is generally between seven to ten acres with setbacks. And landscaping and everything that goes with it, so it, you would need a large parcel in the first place. That may eliminate some of those options as well. And I did include some land use maps that are at each of your spots in front of you. Of the current and future land use, as well as Leesack zoning. And just to highlight, Leesack has decided to not allow solar gardens in their township, so they just allow residential type uses. They have voiced their concerns with it, and they feel that the best areas are within the city of Sartell limits, within the U one district, which is in orange there. That may not necessarily match our thoughts of that, but I don't think administratively they can review those and make sure they're meeting all the standards just with their staff. So what is next? We have options. Planning Commission approved the ordinance, or recommended for approval of the ordinance as the staff modifications. If we approve it tonight, it immediately takes effect. We can extend the solar moratorium up to one year for a state statute. Or we cannot approve the solar ordinance, and if we did nothing, the ordinance would revert to what is currently in place right now. So with that, I would ask council to open up the public hearing to take any testimony from the public and then move on to comments and questions that you may have.
Excellent, thank you. We will open the public hearing for solar ordinance. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Please state your name, address and affiliation.
Evan Carlson, Enterprise Energy, twenty-nine, twenty-five, Dean Parkway in Minneapolis. First off, I'd like you all to know how much I appreciate the effort that went into doing this in a matter of a shorter amount of time. Time is very important to developers, and having decisive decisions in a short order of time makes a big difference, and I know it creates more work, and I really appreciate the work that went into doing this. I also know it creates more work for your staff, and I'd like to recognize the hard work that they put into that and let you know how much I appreciate that as well. As for the ordinance itself, it is a more restrictive ordinance, but I would like to express my support for it. And particularly in the way that it is, it's forward-looking and plans for solar in a way that is more restrictive, but in a way that works with your growth goals and doesn't interfere the city's long-term growth goals. And hopefully can allow for solar in a way that generates some tax revenue and complements the city's long-term planning. So I know it can be a bumpy process, and it's a lot of work. I really appreciate the work you've done, and that's, that's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the solar ordinance? Second call, anyone wishing to testify on the solar ordinance? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the solar ordinance? Please step forward. We'll close the public hearing. Council, questions?
Carrie, you mentioned about the energy production reports. Is that something that we can make a requirement, monthly, quarterly, however often?
Yeah, we can make that, they have to report that annually, I believe, so we could match what the state requirement is for that.
So really, it's, you could really go two years and without anything, yeah.
Carrie, just curious on the ten-megawatt limit, to understand, to quantify that, is that just a slow growth, or how was that kind of determined from that level?
The thought process behind that is, we have three right now, so we have set up, let's just say seventy acres left if this would go through. So potentially, if we meet that cap right away, say within the next few years or so, we can reevaluate at that time. We just felt that if it was higher, we may not be appropriately planning for the future growth. And within that Leesack area, the U one, which is our kind of first ring of development, that has larger parcels, we would, we would like to make sure we're appropriately planning for the future. So that's the thought process behind the ten-megawatt.
Carrie, you talked about the setback from arterial roadways. What do we do about future arterials? And, and how would then existing solar gardens be implicated, if at all?
So with the plating process, we, if we have a future roadway, we would require right away within that, depending on the location. However, for the actual structural of it, what's an arterial roadway and what's not, that's and maybe April can speak more on that, but that's something that's determined by traffic counts. So generally, what we have right now, I don't foresee it expanding in the near future, but I'll have April comment on that.
So the city does have designations on the existing roadways and then future roadways. We do have a master roadway plan for those critical arterial roads. So we would be able to look at that future plan and how that compares to any property that would be looking to develop and a plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned that the decommissioning would require a financial guarantee. Do you have any thoughts around how that's determined, or at what amount, or how is that structured?
I've, I've reached out to a few local cities who also require that, and they make, they require the develop, the solar developer landowner of that property to submit actual quotes on what it would take to fully decommission and return to pre-developed. And we could require two or three quotes to make sure that it's fair and determined based on that.
Start being a per, per project basis, okay? And then there is mention that underground utilities would be required if appropriate. What is the appropriateness and how is that determined?
So if, of course, if the ground is unable to place utilities under that or disturb the actual soil more than it does good, we would look at that at a, at a per-project basis, but we would first want to make sure that all the first want to make sure that all the utilities are underground if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I wanna thank Carrie for all your information and, and, uh, I sat through couple different planning commission meetings on this and, and came to, uh, the open forum and conversation, but I'm just kinda curious on, as you can tell by our turnout for public hearing, we have a lot of interest until it gets built and then the day before it's being approved, we'll, we'll probably have a bunch of people. Have we reached out publicly in any kind of social media way of discussing this, just so we have exposure to the general public that we're not throwing something secretively, since they showed up at our open forum? Um, secretively decided by the council, um, is there a way we can get this message out? And I just wanted to make sure that we have a good feedback from the general public that we are being open, transparent. And I don't want them to come back and say, this is another deal. I mean, we've learned our lesson the last couple times, so I'm being over-sensitive to it. Have we got a campaign or anything that we're doing with this topic?
So like I mentioned earlier, the only other public hearing we had for this specific topic was in May when we did a bunch of the other ordinances, um, outside of that, in tonight, today's public hearing, there haven't been any other engagement efforts. So how, just following our standard public hearing notices and publishments. Outside of that, no, we haven't engaged the public, um, on this outside of our general practice. That, if that is something that, um, council would like to pursue, that's always an option. I just haven't had direction to go that route yet.
I'm just being over cautious and I, I don't, I don't know where everybody else stands on this. I just wanna make sure that we do have, um, you know, if we take a giant billboard out or something, I don't know how else to get people engaged in topics until it's beyond the time, so if there is something we can work on potentially, either survey or potentially getting an open forum, I, I don't even know what the avenue was. I'd look for staff on suggestions and something like that. I just wanna make sure that we're clear and, and out there with this.
I think one thing to, to note on that is, um, unlike some of the other topics, this is, this is allowed, was allowed up until a moratorium and, and that now the I think back to, um, Tim, you and I served on for multifamily, right? Something similar that it was, it was allowed and we were trying to, uh, make it more restrictive as a council at that time, right? Um, versus the contrary of bringing something new and allowing something new to come in. So I think there's, I think there's a difference there when we're, um, making it more stringent than opening it up as something new.
I, I would agree with that. I, I think that, um, in that theory, uh, solar gardens and energy is green and everybody's kind of in the back of their heads going, oh, this is good. This is good for the environment. This is good for the city. This is a good. But there's a perceived, or maybe a misconception on really what is it, cause I don't think they have a grasp of scale, setbacks, all that stuff. And, and what we're flushing out in this ordinance is, is clear as day to me. And I see this, I, I understand that we're very concerned and yeah, um, it was pointed out that it is restrictive. Um, I just wanna make sure, like I said, that people understand what a solar garden is and actually what the impact it would be, um, coming forward in wherever it might land. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that's, and I think with the interim, um, use permit that's required, I think we have a little bit of discretion as a council to look at the best and highest use or whatever terms we wanna state there, um, moving forward, but I also think that I, I know there's people asleep at the wheel right now and aren't paying attention. They're just nodding, saying solar energy is good. We understand it, but they don't foresee the impact that it could happen, happen, or it could happen on the city. Yes, it's huge power, uh, powerful entity of feeding the system and being green, but I just wanna, you know, make sure everybody has their own opinion and it's expressed to us.
Um, Tim, just to answer your question from a staff perspective, I mean, we, we'd have to put our heads together, but I'm just thinking back. Carrie wouldn't have been here, but I was here during the multifamily moratorium and um, during that time, I think, I think we did do like an open house with kinda some tag boards and educational, and I think we also did a survey. I do know, um, recently, we've been able to add a couple of features with our, our, uh, website as well. As Carrie mentioned, we've got the kind of the facts and figures piece built out already, but I think we could send that out via email to anybody who's given us an email address already through the website. So I think there'd be a few different ways, um, I mean, you make a good point that, that I, since I've been here, I've not been a part of a moratorium where we haven't done a public input aspect. Whatever direction you guys would wanna take that of what type or what format. My big, we just had to put our heads together on making sure that we're educating right, cause solar's, especially this ordinance is complicated and I just would wanna make sure that we're able to get the messaging right, but I'm, I'm confident between myself, Carrie and Nikki, we'd be able to do that. We just would need some direction from you guys on how extensive and where to go with that.
I, I think it's a good point in, in light of this ordinance allowing solar and any zoning, um, I, I think the one thing I get stuck on is, is the residential aspect and the fact that it could potentially impact homeowners, um, I think that's something that we shouldn't take lightly either and, and potentially open it up for that feedback, um. Like you said, we've, we've been down this road and, and it's important we engage the community, um, as early as, as early as we can.
I think one thing I'd share, a couple of things I'd share, um, just as, as, uh, we've kinda progressed through this, I think I think the benefit, um, of this new ordinance is, is moving from a CUP to an IUP. I think it's scary to think that, um, something could be there indefinite, um, versus, you know, interim or short term. And then I think the, the three other things that I'll bucket into maybe one that I think we really staff got right and planning commission got right here is, is screening setbacks and the decommissioning. Again, I, I don't know if any of the area cities have experience with decommissioning one yet, and, and that's a little bit scary that it is something new and what does decommissioning look like? And so having that financial assurance that, um, it would be able to be returned if something goes wrong to its natural or original state screening. I look at the one example that we have in our community today and I don't believe that's, um, that screening meets probably the desire of our community, and so I think, uh, this ordinance has much more stringent. And then the setbacks, and I know the setbacks were certainly something that was, uh, talked about extensively at the, uh, planning commission workshop and then at the planning commission meeting, uh, setbacks from houses, um, and other structures that are in place, and so I, I think we're, the additional, um, restriction on this is, is really favorable for the community. And number one on that is the movement from CUP to IUP.
Carrie, under solar gardens, item three, it talks about utilizing lowland, wetlands and other non-buildable, um, sites. Is there anything or a definition that determines what's technically non-buildable or?
There, there wouldn't be anything definitive in that. That would be up to the applicant, um, to determine that it is undegradable or lowland, wetland. Of course, we can look at actual wetland delineations to determine if it is actually wetland, um. However, the applicant, um, needs to meet that requirement and show how they meet that requirement, um, if we are questioning how they got to that point, but of course, um, we can look at how we um, in- intend to expand and develop, um, orderly within our community. We can look and see if that is in fact developable, um, with utilities, um, road access, things like that as well. We can look at and determine.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to, um, Anna brought up a point where it made me process a little more about, um, at least my opinion of the moratorium. Um, is to, um, obviously not rush through it, put a pause on things, get, um, feedback of developers, professionals, um, the public, et cetera, down the list. Um, and I don't wanna be one of those councils that, um, continues to stub your foot and doesn't learn your lesson. I think um, we've taken steps to be transparent. Um, I think, um, we owe it to, um, everyone involved to make sure that we, um, give the process, um, the time and people to, um, express their opinions. Um, as Tim said, it's um, it might be the case where the day after it happens and like the opinions come forward, um, but I wanna make sure that, um, that we learn our lessons, we're true to our word, um, and I think, um, looking down all the avenues like Tim mentioned or Anna alluded to, um, would be the best case in this situation.
I guess before we get into too much deliberation, um, I wanna wrap up any questions and then if we can get a motion, then we can deliberate from there, uh, so that's, are there any other questions for staff?
Is there anything in this ordinance on the, once the decommissioned, maybe it's industry standards, what happens to the panels? I know that there were some people that brought up pollution and whatever, and maybe there's an in- industry standard now of how they're recycled, are they thrown in a landfill? I mean, is there anything? That's the only part I, I don't have a lot of clarity on, you know, what is the impact on the environment once it's gone?
Unfortunately, with the newer technology of this, there isn't, I can't say this is exactly what they're going to do with the panels and this is how they recycle them. I do know that they attempt to recycle as much of the product as they can, um, however, most of the country, um, even with these have not reached their full lifespan of the panels, so that's what's a little bit scary about that, um, but ultimately, I would hope that we would have enough um, in the future, in thirty years, when it does reach that, that we can have a say in what is the pre-developed condition and meeting that again, but unfortunately, it's kind of the unknown right now.
Have we looked at, um, city fees at all and what this is gonna run developers, uh, and will that vary by zoning, um, depending upon where the IUP is?
Y- yeah, we have, we have looked at city fees, um, for this and particularly our city fees, um, wouldn't be dependent on the zoning district. We can do it dependent on the actual development of that, um, same with park fees. It's what you're actually developing on that, and that's a state statutes that we can do that. However, when we're redoing our, um, fee schedule in the next few months here, uh, we may look at adding, uh, solar development fee line item, but that's ultimately something that we need to work on in the future. There, sorry, there are some, uh, for tax, for taxes, um, we would generate more just because it would be classified as a public utility. However, some goes to the county, some goes to us, like we know, um, and then there's other fees that we would, um, get as well, such as, um, production tax, however, eighty percent goes to the county and twenty percent goes to the city. So there are some fees that we would generate, um, and some revenues of that as well, but specifically to solar, we don't have a line item right now, but it's not dependent on the actual zoning district.
Thank you, and have we looked at it in comparison to like single-family development?
Yes, we have, and Rob, would you be able to bring up that or at least speak to that, um, that we looked at?
Yeah, so, um, myself, Carrie and Anna had worked on some type of comparison between what the city would collect for solar versus single-family. And in this example, it's single-family, five homes a year over the course of five years, uh, so the opportunity cost when putting up solar would be less single-family residential if it were in the zoning of single-family residential, so just understanding that that's potentially the opportunity cost when putting up solar in certain zoning districts.
And you're saying there's a fee that is yet to be determined at a line item level potentially that may impact this
Correct.
lightly substantially, we're not sure.
Yeah, this is, um, based on the assumption of using commercial, um, rates for what we would charge for uh, trunk fees and park dedication fees in comparison to what we'd charge for a single-family park and trunk fees uh, in that as well. And then we looked at the building permit revenue for single-family homes, um, and I was able to find the permit revenue from one, um, the three megawatt solar was constructed as well, so that's factored in here.
Jill, a couple of points I'll make on this, um, so fee schedule wise, I think, just to clarify that, we typically work on our fee schedule every fall, and so as of right now, there isn't a solar category on there, but we could add one. Um, but otherwise, uh, according, you know, basically what was sug- suggesting, suggesting is that we would charge the commercial rate based on our current fee schedule, but the council could create an additional line item category for solar that would permit it at a higher rate per se, so that you would generate more revenue, um. Two key points, I think, on this graph that I wanna make sure to point out is that, just to have your brains turning a little bit, is that obviously, there's a demand for solar right now because we know that there's funds out there for solar from, from state and federal level. So what you can't show on a graph like this is the now versus a, like, solar could go in now. A housing development, it might be ten, twenty years, and so you it's, we don't have people necessarily knocking down our door for housing development. I think, um, Alex, your point about the best use, I mean, maybe we could clarify some language there of requiring there to be like elevate, a proof of you know, low elevations, no utility connections and no road connections, or something that would show that there's an engineer opinion or something that shows that it's not developable property, otherwise clearly, because when you build housing developments, it's not just the the generation of the initial fees, but it's the increase in the tax base and then the value of those homes and our tax capacity increases. So naturally, you're gonna see a increase because it's more homes being built and values increases, increasing versus solar where you're gonna get all the money today, but you're not gonna see an increase over time, um, and actually, it's a, it's a pretty minimal tax base, um, overall. So just wanted to clarify why you see the, you know, the growth versus kind of the flat line. Uh, but then also recognize on, on the solar side, you're getting all the money upfront right now on property that maybe you're not gonna see development on for ten, fifteen, twenty years. I mean, so you kinda got away the, the time and that's really hard to reflect on a graph. We just kept everything constant when we looked at it.
Like, what, what does our start, housing starts in the last five years? Uh, I mean, how many single-family off the top of your head?
A year?
Yeah.
How many single-family permits a year?
New construction.
New construction.
Yeah, new construction.
Yeah, so last year was lower, um, around the thirty, and then previous was around ninety-six, seventy, sixty or so, and right now we're at about twelve for this year, so.
Right, so this, this bar chart is a little, you know, in optimum development of a property. Um, so I, I, it's a little deceiving, but I think you, you are correct by saying it is right now and it's consistent. Where a housing development could take thirty years to even get going, so especially if it's out in the rural areas.
So we just, the orange, we just compared against Eagle Ridge, which is the current development we have and kinda the pace that that's developed out, but I mean, your market is gonna, all of a sudden, interest rates change and your market's gonna influence a lot of that, and so it's we tried to use constants on that and didn't really reflect timing in this, cause there's just no way to to show the difference there, but just, just know that, you know, any naturally, the value's gonna be higher in a housing development if you do a housing development, cause values grow and you're gonna get more houses every year. In a perfect world with good market.
And the solar you're projecting here, that's what megawatt or how many acres are you assuming?
So we actually did a, um, we actually used the twenty acre, just over twenty acre parcel on the north part of Pinecone. So we, we pulled real numbers of what their permit cost was, megawatts. We applied the eighty, twenty utility rate from the state. It's charged as a, a public utility tax base wise. Kinda replicated exactly what they had. Just to give a general idea of, that would be a, a fairly large, that one was like twenty, twenty-three acres, I think, or something around that. So that'd be pretty, a pretty big.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just jump in and say, you know, obviously, we had the ability to do this in the community prior and now this sounds like it's a more restrictive. I also agree, Tim, that, you know, always having more public comment is great. We've obviously had two public hearings and so I'm over that. But at some point, from the moratorium perspective, I guess what I would say is I would like to get to a decision. It's either we offer this as something we can do in the community or something we don't. And if we do, it sounds like the planning commission and all the work that we talked about here and staff has done has come up with a pretty restrictive, from reading it, it looks like it will be in areas that are probably not the fastest to develop per that last slide, from a residential perspective. And I also think you have the landlord specifically, right? They're, they're going to be looking for the maximum value from their properties. If, if their ability to develop that and, and the need is out there, obviously twelve applications this year is not, meaning there's a lot of need right now. But I think that will balance itself out as well, especially when you're doing the ten megawatts. And you said that was a total of seventy total acres? What, what was your total that you had said?
Yeah, so approximately seventy acres, depending on layout and things like that, would be left.
Okay.
To meet that cap that's proposed.
So I just think it's great work in a short period of time. So I think from my perspective, we've gotten to a really, really good spot. If the council feels like we should go back out to the public and, and ask one more time all that this has been written and completed, I would be supportive of that. But I feel like we need to get to a decision at some point on this for the existing projects that are in place.
I would agree. Like I mentioned, I think more input's great, but I think we need to make sure we don't delay the process in that effort either. And if we were to do an open house, social media, email those that are a part of our program, how quick can something like that be put together? Is it within a week? That gives two weeks for feedback, if it's at the next council meeting, or how quick could we do that?
Uh, well, I mean, we have kind of templates built, but, and she's got the website up and running. But I'd say you'd probably, if you want to do an open house, you're probably looking at like a September date just to give people enough notification to be able to attend. The survey, we typically leave surveys open for a minimum of thirty days. And then you'd want to allow some staff time to analyze that. So I'd say, I would think by the end of the year, you'd be able to accomplish all of that and be able to come back with results to the council to say, here's what the public thinks based on this ordinance. I, I do think from a, from a, you know, planning commission perspective, I think it would have been premature for us to go out for, for any council input without an ordinance to present. So I think, timing wise, if you wanted to do it, at least you have something that you can concrete give them now. It's just going to be trying to explain it to them, but I'm confident we can figure that part out.
Yeah, and that's kind of, I don't, I think end of the year might be stretching it too far to push it back. Kind of like Ryan alluded to a little bit, the ordinance was in place. I think we're very close with the ordinance that we have here. I, I personally think an open house might not be necessary just because I feel, kind of like Ryan said, it's something that's in place, just being adjusted, it's very restrictive. And it's not actually approving a garden in place with this. In my opinion, if we could get the word out, email, social media, say, hey, reach out to your council members for feedback within the next two weeks, four weeks, I think would be sufficient, but just what I think.
I would concur. I would want to move a little bit quicker than end of the year, just, you know, say, hey, we, we've had two public hearings so far. We've had it up here quite often. It sounds like there's been two planning commissions on this as well. And so I would agree with a timeframe of that of saying, hey, here's the actual ordinance. You've, you've heard us talking about this really over the last two or three months a lot. We want to have it, we now have an ordinance, we want to have, have you take a look at it and whether that be a third public hearing or just feedback to the council meeting and then, you know, ultimately make a decision on, on how we're going to move forward here.
I think it's been one of the more well highlighted within the, the papers, if you will, topics that we've, we've covered recently. So I do think the words out there, I, I, council member Ellis and I attended, sat in and listened on the planning commission workshop that we as council had asked planning commission to go back and do. And I'm trying to think off the top of my head, there was a number of developers that came to that. There was C M B A was part of that.
Yeah, we had a local developer and then, well, two local developers and then a nationwide solar developer. We have C M B A, Lee Sack Township representative here as well.
And then I haven't read that ordinance, the ordinance that's been referenced, but Big Lake was a ordinance that the planning commission referenced a couple of different times as they have, that community has redone their ordinance. I mean, I guess, I, I wouldn't argue that we're going to get this a hundred percent right, but I think that goes with most of our ordinances, is that based off what we know today, based off what our neighboring communities are doing, I think we're as restrictive, if not more restrictive with this. I think as we continue forward, there may, there might be a case where we need to add more restrictions into it. We also have that opportunity on half of this ordinance, on the garden side, we can add additional restrictions into it. Whereas the, the residential side, it's, it's just unallowed use as long as they meet the standards. So I, I do appreciate the feedback. If it was something new, I think we need a lot more feedback. But it's more restrictive than what we have today, so. Not sure what else we're going to learn. I guess in order to, sorry, go ahead.
I was, I was going to agree with you. I think that, but I also think that what we're going to learn is exposure, overexposure and clarification of actual ordinance out there for someone to read, review and understand. If we can do something in that fashion where we get it out in the press or we get it out on social media. And yeah, I, I, I don't know if, the end of the year seems like a long time to me. I, I would like to facilitate it a little quicker than that, but I, I, I just don't want to get this wrong as in regards to, you know, you're right, it is, I, I like the ordinance as it is. I like everything that's going with it. I think it's defined well. It's, I think we just need to get it out there and have some public forum. If it's social media, survey, whatever, something that we can expedite.
If, if that's what council would like to do, I just want to make sure that we fully understand that the most expedited process would be most likely a survey. That way residents or business, businesses or interested people could complete that on their own time instead of an open house style format. And within that, I believe we can link to the website of where to find more resources if you want to learn more about it in that retrospect, but we do need to, if that is what council decides, we would need to extend the moratorium for that, to achieve that. Because if we don't and we, it just wouldn't make sense to not do that without the public input if that's what we're seeking. And I do think with survey, we could do that in a timelier process and maybe keep it open less amount of time and then analyze everything that is submitted and report back in a more timely manner than end of year for sure. But if that's the route council wants to take, we would have to extend the moratorium.
Carrie, and then that feedback could be made public?
Absolutely, yep.
I think, you know, Tim mentioned this earlier and I think one of the hesitations is, is, I agree with what's been said. I think that the, the planning commission did a fantastic job and I know we're, we're getting into discussion here, not questions. But it's one of these things that people aren't going to take issue until it's the property next to them or, you know, the property next to their grandfather or whatever, and then it becomes an issue. And I think it's a particular concern because we are allowing a public utility to be in residential and that's the one area I feel like we owe to the community to receive additional feedback on. I think what the planning commission did and designed makes complete sense, but I do think we should be getting feedback on that piece of it specifically, but.
Council, if there's not any further questions, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, would we call it, if we delay, if you did a survey, would we call it to delay? Or extend the moratorium?
Extend the moratorium and I would need a month if it was a few months. Otherwise, we can do up to a year and then it's determined upon council to do things quicker. But it is very difficult to navigate constantly extending moratoriums. I know it is scary to see the whole year that we're allowed. However, ultimately, we dictate that timing.
How long would it take to build a survey between you or Nikki or, like, what, we're talking a week or a month? Or how long are we talking?
I would, I don't, I would, if, if you're going to put a month on it, I would say, you know, initially, the planning commission recommended a six-month moratorium and so an additional three months at an absolute minimum between allowing a survey and then allowing time for staff to analyze it and allowing you guys time to digest it and the public to digest it. I would say that, where does that put us? It'd be August, September, October, so November first?
Yeah, that would mean we would have to bring it back to council end of October would be our council meeting.
Would be three months from today.
I'll make a motion to extend the moratorium. I say not to exceed additional three months, not to exceed additional three months and then the output of a public survey for feedback. Is that sufficient?
We have a motion to extend the moratorium on solar for three months, not to exceed three months. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
A discussion point would be based on the survey. And if we get the results forward from the survey, I think, I, I don't have a problem. I think that the, the ordinance is going to be clear and, and move forward, so I don't, I don't see a problem with. And we have the interim use permit, kind of umbrella insurance on the backside. So if we do have something that comes forward that none of us like or, or don't approve of, then we have the opportunity to have the developer prove to us that it's a, you know, best and highest use in the property. So I think we're covering our bases. I just think that the exposure to the public would probably be in light of recent discussions, I think is probably the best way to go.
I would agree with that. I think in watching the planning commission, they, I understand that they talk to vendors, developers, other experts, and I think, just that last piece, I think that will solidify thing would be that, that public feedback.
I think I would just add that we would try to expedite that survey. I feel like three months is a little bit longer than we probably need to do a survey and get feedback after two public hearings. Would be the only thing I would say is just continuing to drag out a moratorium is kind of where I get a little hesitant on continuing to use that as kind of a, something that we had. We, we put it in place because we had an ordinance that we didn't feel was sufficient. Now I feel like we've gotten one there, we want to get public feedback. Three months feels like a long time to be able to not be able to get feedback on this subject that's, you know, been up here for quite a bit of time. So that puts us into the winter and might as well add another year moratorium on, on any of these projects that are already existing and, and in place. And that was, one of my concerns earlier was, you know, really the pressure you put on developers who have already spent time and money here on something like this. So I would ask that if that is the, what we vote on this evening, that we would try to do it faster than the three months because I think we could get public feedback, again, two public hearings already. And I want the feedback, but I think we could do it a little bit faster than three months.
Excuse me. I want to, I guess, just start off by thanking the planning commission for the, the work that they did on this. I think that they did a lot of impressive and thoughtful work in a, in a consolidated amount of time. I know that there's a lot of research and brainstorming involved and, and, you know, developing something for the benefit of Sartell for the long term. I, I think as relates to the moratorium, I think the planning commission did their job. They presented us with an ordinance that meets the requirements we are looking for. But I do think it's our job as council now to take that ordinance to the public and engage them in the best means that we can. And so I am supportive of extending the moratorium for that reason, so we can obtain that feedback and move forward. I mentioned this earlier in particular because we are allowing this in residential zoning. I have, I still have some concerns or hesitations there, so I do want that feedback. And I think with that, I think we'll, we position ourselves to be in a good position to move forward based on feedback from the community.
Yeah, and I, I think we're all in favor of, of additional feedback. I, I look at what staff and planning commission have been able to accomplish in the last three months with the moratorium and it was significant amount. And so I guess I, like Jed, would challenge the, the three months to, to do a survey and capture feedback. Seems extended from based off what has all gotten done in the last three months. So I guess my challenge would be, how fast can we get that done? How do we move forward so that we bring assurance back to the marketplace? And second is, I'm, I'm a little bit, we talk about, hey, we've all learned from getting feedback here, right? But if we have people that come and say, hey, absolutely don't do it, like, is that the direction we're going? Right? I mean, so I, I just want us to be thoughtful in why we're asking for feedback and what we plan to do with feedback versus just the, you know, general, hey, let's get feedback. So I think our community has, has, has given us a lot of feedback lately. One of that is be more open, be more accessible. And so I guess as long as we're doing that here in the next three months, we're achieving that.
And I think Ryan brings up a good point, feedback saying, I don't want solar, isn't productive to the conversation. It's, hey, did you consider this? Did you consider that? And I think that's, we don't, kind of like Jill alluded a little bit, we don't want to find that we missed a gap somewhere where it ends up in somewhat, somewhere we don't want it to be, so. And I, I agree, I'm in the motion of three months, but I, the date I was looking at originally was the end of September. I'm thinking sooner, great. Yeah, I think making that feedback productive and alluding to the conversation would be great.
And I don't, I mean, through a survey, you know, Anna talked about getting the, the narrative out there and, and correct. I think my assumption is we're going to get a lot of feedback of just no solar, right? And that's one of the topics that the planning commission directly grappled with is, hey, we don't want no solar. We want to be thoughtful where solar goes, how it goes there. That's what really drove a lot of the I U P versus C U P discussion. There was a gentleman from a local developer, and I'm escaping his name right now, but he talked about best use, right? And how if you've got agricultural land that's going to be agricultural land, what is that interim best use? And he really highlighted to the planning commission about the value of something like solar. So again, I, Alex, I, I build off your point of what are we going to do with that feedback? If it's just a bunch of responses that say no to solar, if the council's prepared to go that route, then great, we're going to get feedback. If that's not the route we're going to go, I wonder how we're going to articulate through a stagnant survey what that is. The point was brought up is that, hey, every I U P project's actually going to be brought. The point was brought up is that, hey, every I U P project's actually gonna be brought forward on its own merit. And specifically reviewed for that project. That's where I, I think as council, as planning commission, we're equipped to say, hey, based off this particular project. Versus the broad sense of do we want solar in the community? We can allow those decisions to happen on the merit of individual project, excuse me, individual projects.
Mayor, I'll just speak to the timeline piece of it, I mean, obviously staff is gonna work as efficiently as we possibly can. I'll add that I think it's going to be incredibly critical to your point that this survey gets crafted in a way that. Doesn't just give you results of I don't want solar or I do want solar, which is going to take us some time and. It will require us to put some thought into it, we're not just gonna whip together a survey. In the meantime, we have the Wilds Drainage Study, Mill redevelopment property, like, and we don't have a community development director. Every other moratorium we've done, we have done all of one year on it. The multifamily ordinance wasn't a new ordinance, we revised a current ordinance. This is the exact same process and we're being asked to essentially expedite it as quickly as possible. We're working as quickly as possible, we will continue to work as quickly as possible, but six months to do a solar ordinance, which will greatly impact our community. Is not extensive, uh, we normally take up to a year on moratoriums and we have used all of that, we still have not approved. A stockpile ordinance, which is a month away from expiring, so. This is not uncommon, we've done this many times, um, we've used all of that year every other time, we will move this as quickly and efficiently as we. Possibly can, but not sacrificing the input from our public and, and making sure that that survey is really well crafted, otherwise. It will be pointless data for you guys, you won't be able to use it.
I think using the mill survey as a point of comparison, I do think the visuals helped people to articulate. Again, getting at specific, specific feedback to the site versus. Do you wanna redeveloped?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, we have a motion on the table for, uh, three-month extension of the moratorium. Um, while putting out a survey and obtaining the survey feedback. Is that inclusive? Seeing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, next item is a public hearing on assessment cancellations on AIM parcels.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council, when we signed the purchase agreement with AIM. We agreed to assume all the special assessments on those properties, so now that we have actually closed on those properties, we're looking to officially remove the assessments. So we don't have. To, um, end up paying ourselves, um, and with that, we are required to open up a public meeting. And approve the resolution included in your packet, uh, so more of a formality, um, now that we've. Assume the assessments to then cancel the assessments, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Rob before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to testify on the assessment cancellations on AIM parcels, please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify on the assessment cancellations? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the assessment cancellations? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion? Rob, just for, uh, I guess on the record, total amount. Of assessments that we're canceling?
Yeah, uh, just over a million in assessments, which include deferred assessments, potential future assessments and actual levied assessments. So a combination of the three, which are detailed on the. Uh, second page of the resolution for more information.
Counsel, look for a motion on the cancellation of the assessments for AIM parcels. We have a motion to approve the cancellation, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries, on to new business, uh, Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force grant.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm asking for a motion in support, uh, to add one of our officers to the Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force. Uh, and then backfill, hire and backfill that position, so this came about, uh, the. Human Trafficking Task Force approached us, uh, as we're kinda looking for different opportunities for our officers and they're short. An officer right now due to a, a local agency pulling out because of staffing shortages, so. This is a way to fund, unlike Vodafone, this funds, uh, one hundred percent, so they cover, uh, all of our. Um, the fees and wages of our officer and is in conjunction with the Stearns County Sheriff's Office and Saint Cloud Police Department. Officer B. Howe is at the Saint Cloud Police Department, and if we, uh, make that assignment, we're asking for a three-year commitment. Uh, of the officer that we picked, mostly for training to, uh, take place and. Uh, I know that this is a, this is gonna be a difficult assignment for anyone to take on, uh, but also. When we discussed internally, we didn't wanna turn to, uh, a blind eye to the problem that our state has with human trafficking, so. Um, as difficult as that is, um. This is something that will kinda shape how we move forward with these type of task force jobs too and making sure we're checking in with that officer. Uh, using the wellness funds we have to, uh, try to implement, uh, more mandatory wellness check-ins, mental wellness check-ins every, uh, every year, so. Stand for any questions on the assignment or anything?
Yeah, I know this assignment has a lot of burnout in, in policing and, and just a lot of exposure to stuff that. We don't wanna know about, but we have to, um, and I think that by far supporting this is something we, we have to engage in. So for sure, I appreciate the wellness check and, and make sure that that officer is doing what he, you know, or her, she might want, um. In that position and make sure it's all clear and, and healthy, so.
I would add that, uh, uh, Tim and I sitting on public safety committee had that conversation is, um, he and I both felt. We're gonna put an officer in this position. Um, what's the future of that officer in our community and how do we? How do we protect the person that that officer is as well, and, um. Yeah, I mean, any, anything we can do to have very frequent check-ins, mental health. As Tim said, they're taking on a huge burden for our community, for our broader state, uh, that we all appreciate and. Most people don't even wanna talk about, but I, I don't want the person behind that badge to be negatively impacted for, uh, what they're doing. But love that we're gonna be represented on there, I think there's a lot that can come back to our community from a knowledge and detection. So exciting that, uh, you're able to offer your, one of your officers out additional opportunities from just patrol as well. Counsel, seeing no other, uh, questions, comments, we'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the assignment.
There's a motion to approve the assignment and the backfill, uh, of the full-time.
Correct.
We have that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. Old business, Nineteenth Avenue South, project update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and to council, uh, here's a quick update, uh, we're getting near the end of the project. Uh, I hope by the end of this week, we will have curb and gutter down. Next week tolerance in the gravel and paving, potentially the week of August eighth. With, uh, by the time we stripe it and things, probably mid-August, we should be looking to, to open that road up to traffic, they'll have projects. Work to do, some of the trail to build, they got landscaping to do, but, uh, projects getting close to open and, uh. It will time well, I think, uh, by coincidence with the opening of the roundabout at County Four and County One Thirty-three, I think. I've heard that could be around the middle of, uh, August as well, so both should be back in service by school opening. Which, uh, is good news, now one way I ask, why does this have to be an agenda item, uh, for an update? And, uh, I just wanted to say, done say thank you to the staff, uh, and the council, uh, this is my last meeting at, uh. City of Sartell, I am, uh, my wife and I are moving to the Black Hills. I took a job as a city engineer out there. So you guys sucked me back into city engineering and look what happened. Um, so I've enjoyed my year and a half, uh, working with the council, the staff, get a great staff. Uh, it's been fun working with April, I've, I've been in the same office with her for over twenty years, but this is the first time I really got to work with her and I have had a great time. We are very, very fortunate to have a talented young engineer. In our midst and, and Hunter will be, uh, probably the primary to help April, uh, and take over a lot of my, my projects and, uh. And, uh, he's gonna, he's gonna do well, but I just wanted to take that opportunity and I appreciate Anna sticking this on the agenda so to say thank you. I've enjoyed it and, uh, we're looking forward to, to living in the hills, we, we've been there many, many times and this will just be one more adventure for us.
Well, congrats.
Thank you.
It's been, uh, I've had an opportunity to work with you, especially onsite at the Nineteenth Avenue South project, so, uh, it's been a lot of fun to, uh. Have you part of the team and, uh, appreciate all that you've done for us.
Thank you, it's, it's a bittersweet, uh, decision, uh, been with S C H twenty-five years, hard to leave. Uh, but I just wanna try something a little bit different again, so, thanks again.
Counsel, any?
No, just saying, thank you for your assistance over the last year and a half and we wish you the best of luck and.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for your service and helping us, just a little concerned with the partner over there, you know, it's two in a row she's gotten rid of, so there's something.
Yeah, thank you and good luck.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Thank you. No motion on that needed. Unless we, we have that option, I guess. Yeah. Alright, on to department reports, we have first up administration.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report in front of you, a few things adjusted and added on here, um, we did close on the mill site in June. And so we're in the midst of that redevelopment study, hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of the year and there will be some. Um, concept plans and open houses coming up this fall for that. Um, and then it, the other two I added on the top there, so we are hoping by the end of the year, which. Is going to be aggressive, uh, to do a complete ordinance overhaul, there's many areas that are outdated. Something I've done before in other cities that I've worked in, so it's not, um, out of the norm for me, but it, we have a massive code book. And it is very outdated, and so we're probably gonna pare that out, uh, in chapters and I haven't started. So, when I say five percent, it's the five percent that I've read, so. We're gonna start going on that and try to get that done by the end of the year, it likely is gonna get, um, pulled into twenty twenty-four, uh, but that's. It's typically something that costs anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand to have a consultant do it, so I think it's well worth our internal time. We have the best knowledge of what we need for our ordinances, so hopefully we can get that done. And then we're also working on the governance policies for the council handbook and we'll bring that to council workshop once we're done with the budget, which is. Uh, we'll, we'll likely aim for September, October to bring those, uh, to review with everybody as well, so. Any other questions, let me know, otherwise those are the main updates.
Counsel, any questions for administration? Uh, next up is finance.
Yes, good evening, you have my report as well, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for finance? Thank you. Uh, community development.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my monthly report in your packet, just one item I did wanna highlight, um. Is that hopefully in September workshop, I'll bring some stockpile discussions to that, um. Cause the moratorium does expire in October, so. Anything else, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, city commission updates.
Um, just a quick report back from everything Sartell meeting, which we met, uh, last Tuesday on, um, and it was. Uh, well attended and we gave a complete update of the mill site redevelopment studies, we went through the same PowerPoint that. Council went through and pointed them to the recording, which is online, and then also, uh, talked in depth about the childcare grant program, so it was a good meeting. Um, and they're excited to get out to the mill site and hopefully tour it, uh, we invited them with the council. Uh, for the council tour date as well, so they're very eager to see about future redevelopment of that site and, and to help out and jump in, so. It was a good meeting.
Uh, council updates, Tim.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Joe?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alex?
One thing, my eldest, um, just got done with baseball season, I wanna give a shout out to John, Tony. Rest of the team, Pro Field, and how many times I heard how immaculate our facility is there. There's many people, every time I walk in, I don't know how great it is, and every time I go out there, there's more improvements that make it even better, so. I just wanna make sure that was noted and, um, you usually have to leave about the fifth inning to get in line for twisties, you have to wait a half hour either, so. So they're doing well also.
Nothing tonight.
I have nothing further either, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.